I feel you're mocking me.
Keep on with your nominee.
Yep.
Here.
Mm-hmm. Oh, boy. So you gotta have thick skin be around here, don't you? It's recommended. You tend to fare a little better.
Strongly encouraged.
Yeah.
That or a box of tissues.
Yeah.
I thought it'd be required, it's recommended.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock, and I'd like to call the January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you would stand with us, and Commissioner Wilder will lead us for invocation, and Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
Y'all by with us. Dear Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day, another beautiful day in Columbia County. We thank you for all the many blessings you bestow upon this community, this state, this country. We ask that you can do a favor as we go through the trying times. We ask that you look over us this evening and at our meeting that we do the right thing and we follow the needs of the people at all times. All this in Jesus' name.
Generalities, to the flag, United States of America. Public. On nation, God, visible, every team.
Thank you. If I could remind you to please silence your cellphones. We do have a quorum tonight of all five commissioners present. Gentlemen, we do have the minutes that we need to approve from the January seventh meeting. Commissioner Wilder and I were absent from that meeting, so if you three have no changes, I'd like a motion for approval.
I move.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes three oh with two abstentions. Gentlemen, we've also had an opportunity to review the agenda for night. If there are no additional items and the agenda as presented meets with your approval, we need a motion for that approval.
I move.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion approved. The agenda is submitted. Passes five zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on February second, twenty-twenty-one, at six P.M. in these chambers. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden to obtain a request to speak for them. If any of y'all would have any comments on our one public hearing item tonight, or if you have something that you'd like to present to us in our public hearing portion of the meeting, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the microphone and take three to five minutes to give us the information you'd like for us to consider. That being said, the first piece of unfinished business we've got is the election of officers for twenty-twenty-one. And I believe the procedure involves me handing over the meeting to the vice chair at this point.
All right, now I'm in charge.
Keep it.
All right, nominations are now in order for the office of chairman of the Columbia County Planning Commissions. We'll take nomination.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna nominate Mr. Jim Cox as the chairman.
Rich Cox has been nominated as chairman. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Passes five zero.
I appreciate it. Back to you. Thank you. I appreciate that, and it's, I believe, the chair is now, I need to get over the right one. The nominations are now open for the office of vice chair of the Columbia County Planning Commission. Could I have a nomination, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Rich Henderson for vice chair.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll close the nominations and move to a vote. All in favor of Commissioner Henderson as vice chair? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Appreciate your all's votes in continuing things on for another year. Back to the agenda. Okay, we have had a request to move our first item, which is a request that was postponed from the December seventeenth meeting to the end of the meeting as one of the folks that would like to speak on behalf of this is running late getting here. So with that being said, gentlemen, if it's okay with you guys, we'll go ahead and move that to the end of the agenda, or do we need to have a vote to amend the agenda? Okay? So we'll move that down to the end of the meeting. We have a couple of information onlys. Mr. Butler, file MW two-one-oh-one-oh-one and file MW two-one-oh-one-oh-two.
Thank you. This is a minor waiver at two fifty-seven Sedenton Drive, approved back on January eighth. Currently is an R two. This is the location of the property. We're looking at both this and the adjacent properties to the north. Look at Heritage Hill, our subdivision, currently zoned R two, shows the undeveloped lot. Also site plan, both of the ones we've seen tonight, has intrusion of steps into the front setback. A pretty minor request, reduction of front setback was from fifty-five feet to forty-nine feet, six inches, which is within a ten percent allowed by, per the minor waiver procedure. Through on January eighth of this year. Second one's two fifty-nine Sedenton Drive, then north of one we just saw earlier, again approved back on January eighth. This is the location of the property. Zoning, again, R two, aerial view of the undeveloped site. Also, again, the intrusion of the steps into the front setback. Again, approved back on January eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
All right, Mr. Butler will stay with you, and massage operator's license for Sarah Washington.
Yes, there's a request for a massage operator's license at eleven oh five Fury's Lane. She's offering on-premise massage services and meets all the requirements of the ordinance. That very recommends approval of the request.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? Okay, if not, I'll need a motion to approve, deny her to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Sarah Washington at eleven oh five Fury's Lane.
Do you hear a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Montgomery, final plat for Highland Lakes Phase Two.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Phase Two of Highland Lakes located off William Few Parkway. The property is currently zoned R two, single-family residential. This is the location of the property on the south side of William Few and the inset area where Phase Two is being developed. This is the final plat for this section. It is ninety-eight lots. This particular rezoning did have a condition that the amenity area for this project be constructed prior to final plating of a hundred and fifty lots. This section, Phase Two, brings them to a hundred and forty-nine, so they have not quite hit that requirement yet. These are all single-family lots with a minimum lot size of ten thousand one hundred and twenty-nine square feet and an average lot size of twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-one square feet. In accordance with our R two requirements, minimum setbacks are thirty feet from the right-of-way and ten feet from the side and rear property lines. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, so we'll need a motion to approve, deny her to table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the final plat for Highland Lakes Phase Two, ninety-eight lots located off William Few Parkway.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Montgomery, final plat for Calari Section Five A.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Section Five A of Calari located off Baker Place Road. This is a planned unit development. And this is the location of this section, kind of on the northeast corner of Calari. And this is the Misty Meadows PRD adjacent to it. This is the final plat for this section. It is thirty-nine single-family lots with a minimum lot size of nine thousand six hundred and sixty-two square feet and an average lot size of twelve thousand seven hundred and six square feet. Per the PUD, setbacks are a minimum of twenty feet from the right-of-way, five feet from the side property lines, and ten feet from the rear property lines. Sidewalks and street trees are provided on both sides of the road, and two-point-four-seven acres of open space is provided in this section. Part of the conditions for one of the revisions was that the right-of-way for the connection to Misty Meadows had to be plotted with this final plat. You can see they're a little bit ahead of the game. They've actually completed the road, so that is in place, so they have met that zoning condition. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? If not, I'll need a motion to approve, deny her to table, as this is not a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Calari Section Five A, thirty-nine lots located off Baker Place Road.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Prove carries five zero. Okay, since we do have our request to, Ruby sure he had on. Anyway, since Mr. Mills has shown up, let's go ahead and go back to our major revision and open the public hearing or file RZ two-zero-one-two-zero-four.
Okay, so he has.
Gentlemen, it's all you.
Major revision for Wimber Court. This is part of the River Island Planned Unit Development, and this is the portion of the revision regarding the location of the driveway access for this lot. This is the location of the property at the back of River Island, and again, currently part of the planned unit development. This is the aerial of the site, so the question is the access from Wimber Court versus Marsh Point Road and the existing site. The lot does have quite a bit of topography to it. It is a fairly steep drop from Wimber Court down to Marsh Point. So this is looking up the slope from Marsh Point Road, and then standing at Wimber Court looking down the slope. This section of River Island was intended to be a unique section, per the PUD. It was intended to have alley-loaded lots with rear driveway access. For this lot, Wimber Court is that alley and the intended access point. And you can see the existing homes that have been built fronting Marsh Point Road do all utilize the alleys. So we see no driveways currently on Marsh Point with the developed lots. The applicants have submitted that, you know, the lot is, obviously, has some topographic challenges and also has a very narrow frontage. Both are true. The frontage is very similar, however, to the adjacent lots on the cul-de-sac, which also have to deal with the turning radius of the cul-de-sac, so they're in a very similar situation. And we'll see building permits. They've all been able to comply with the intent of the PUD to put the driveways on Wimber Court, so the other houses that have been permitted off Wimber Court do have the driveways in that location. These are the two adjacent houses on the cul-de-sac, so you can see where the driveway access is working out on that frontage and on that turn. And the applicant has submitted that the only reason this is possible is that some of the larger vehicles that have to access back here are driving across the island in the middle of Wimber Court. And so he has submitted these photos showing the tire tracks and kind of some of the damage to the stones there. These are the, this is the elevations of the proposed house on this lot. It is four stories, and this is the garage-facing side, so this would be the side-facing Marsh Point. So the original landscape plan, this is the update from previous postponement of this item as we did receive the landscape plan. So Wimber Court at the top here, Marsh Point at the bottom. The original proposal was a couple of small walls and a gate across the driveway. We did have some proposed conditions, and we did receive a revised landscape plan that reflects those proposed conditions. So that would include a low wall along the frontage and then utilization of the brick or the stone material for the driveway intersection with the road. That would go from basically the road to that low wall. Staff is still recommending disapproval of the relocation of the driveway in keeping with the intent of this section of the PUD. However, we do have proposed conditions if the commission is inclined to approve it. Water utility has conditions regardless because they have issues on both sides. So on the Wimber Court side, there is a fire hydrant. It needs a three-foot clear area around it. If the driveway is relocated, that involves relocating the meter and the meter boxes and the cleanout in the driveway. And from planning, the conditions if the driveway is relocated would include the driveway material being brick to match the house construction to that proposed, and actually, the gate has been removed with the revised landscape plan, but at that intersection with the road and then the decorative wall requirement. And that concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes.
Yeah, how long is that span of brick from the road to where the cement will start?
Is it meeting the setback or is it at the right-of-way line?
Property line?
Property line.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's probably less than twenty feet.
Could we go back to the picture of the cul-de-sac? Is, let's go back forward one, where we see the brick. Why is this, is there any, I guess, is this a typical cul-de-sac size? I mean, or is it the vehicles that are being driven through there have a different turning radius? Or what's the issue with this one particular cul-de-sac versus other cul-de-sacs in the neighborhood? Or other cul-de-sacs in the county?
Yeah, if you look at this cul-de-sac here, it's not really a typical, usually it's a, you know,
It's round, it's not.
More rounded one. This is more of a teardrop-type one. I can't speak to the, you know, the turning radius on that.
What are the vehicles that are making this? What kind of vehicles are doing that?
Typically, you're gonna have residential, you know, passenger vehicles, SUVs, things of that nature. You know, this is gonna be somebody's home, and others already live there.
Somebody's Toyota Corolla is doing this to the stone.
Or I think it's larger wheel-based vehicles, you know, full-size trucks.
So the engineer, the design vehicle, was a passenger car. So a passenger car can make these turns and not run over the stone. The issue is the larger vehicles, the full-size pickup trucks, those kind of things are.
Larger vehicles belong to, they belong to the residents, or are they, for the construction like this, there's a big old pallet right here?
I know for sure, some of it definitely is construction-related. I can't speak to what vehicles the other homeowners have.
Have you had any complaints from neighbors, or do they know about it?
I have not heard from, I think we did receive one email from a neighbor, but I have not spoken directly with any of them.
But they probably are not aware of what we're talking about.
I mean, the signs have been on the property since prior to the first public hearing, so they've been out for a couple of months at this point.
So the email we've gotten is from this fellow right here. So there's only two neighbors back there with these two lots. We also talked to the builder for the lot next door. Appeared to be okay with it. So you're not gonna have a lot of neighbors adjacent to this.
I'm just, if it was some type of variance like this, you know, it's against the grain of what's there, so to speak. And that's why I was wondering if anybody was unhappy with it, or. That was the purpose of the question.
All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Mr. Mills? Give us your name and home address. We know who you are, but we want it for the record.
Currently, Matt Mills, three zero zero nine Lake Forest Drive. First of all, thank you for moving the item on the agenda because I got here as quick as I could. First of all, I'm here on behalf of the developer. Condition was put on this whole cul-de-sac that driveways would be alley-fed. That was a request from staff. It was not something that the developer thought was imperative. You know, I think if you look at Marsh Point Drive, there are probably thirty-five houses further south of here that have driveways. There's only about five or six houses on this side of the street that don't have driveways. So Marsh Point has driveways all over. It's not, this is not a unique thing until you get to this very end of the road. Reality is, when we put this condition on it, we didn't think it'd be a big deal. But the reality is, when you get to this lot, you got fourteen-foot elevation drop between where the finished floor, that road grade on Marsh Point is, up to the road. And I can speak to the design of the cul-de-sac. A lot of it had to do with storm drainage. You notice there's an island in the middle of the cul-de-sac. Normally, you have nothing but asphalt in a big round circle. Here, you have a storm drain that is behind that river rock. We had to put the river rock down because the lanes are narrower primarily because you've got this teardrop storm drain in the middle and going down the hills, a lot of water comes that way. So the rock helps with water. The rock also helps with those cars. Large, I mean, large trucks can make the turn if you drive carefully, but even those, I'm saying a large pickup truck still does go over those. But also, it's unique that this lot is located on this side of the island. So if you're gonna put a driveway in, you're gonna turn, you're turning to the left, and all of a sudden, you're gonna make a U-turn to get back into it, if you were to put in a driveway. I've spoken with this owner and this owner. They sent a letter in support, because they both strongly would prefer the driveway to be on this side. So the two adjacent neighbors and the builder next door, which is Charles Dolan, they're all three would like to see the driveway on Marsh Point Road. They're the ones most affected by this. They think that it's gonna cause more congestion with traffic in their cul-de-sac. It's gonna be a garage that's gonna have to sit close to the road because of the road grade drop. They don't want that there. They'd much rather see the edge of the house. But in my mind, from the developer's standpoint, it goes a bit larger. The, I serve as the president of the ARB. ARB has approved this plan and has no qualms with the driveway being down below. And that, we have two residents on the ARB, and one of them's an architect. And we have our sales manager, who's very concerned about aesthetics in the subdivision because she's gotta sell houses and her team has to sell houses. And they're all in support of this. The developers in support of this. You know, I wrote the narrative. I know what our real intent was. This is a unique area, but really, the unique area starts here. Because that's where you really start seeing the river. That's where we built the stone wall that goes all the way around. That's where your river views open up. And we don't have a problem with any of the conditions put forth by the planner, except for the one regarding brick wall. To me, one driveway right here is not a very invasive. The goal of the brick wall that's being proposed by staff in that last condition is to take people's eye away from the driveway. Well, in my mind, low driveway, whether it's brick pavers or whether it's concrete, it's not gonna be that much of a, in everybody's view because it's at ground level. I think you can come to the edge of the corner, which is right by the pool, and put a nice stone wall that's in a curve that'll look like the entrance to this nice area. And I would just propose that if we could change that condition to say that a wall approved by the ARB of River Island, who would.
It's not the wall, it's the materials.
Well, no, it's, I don't really know if we'd have a problem with brick, but across the road, you have a lot of brick walls, but they all serve a purpose. They all serve a purpose. They're all retaining walls. We put, if we put a wall all the way across the front of this property, it's gonna be the only house in River Island that's got a brick wall with columns. So if we can use, if you can leave it to the ARB, which I would argue ARB in River Island has done a better job controlling architecture than almost any subdivision in town. I'm a bit biased, but, you know, we don't, we have one greenhouse that got away from us. Other than that, I think we've done a really good job of maintaining the quality. But I think for the reasons, the neighbors want the driveway on Marsh Point. Thirty-five other driveways on Marsh Point. We can create a unique, if we're acceptable with the conditions and we allow the ARB to approve the wall that's done there, we can create something that looks like it's meant to be there. And that when you're driving down Marsh Point Road, you won't notice the driveway because your eye will be drawn to the corner with a stone wall, because I've done a lot of thinking about this and some landscaping at the corner, that the driveway disappears. When you're talking about, here's the driveway on Marsh Point Road, here's the driveway on Marsh Point Road. This guy didn't have one on Marsh Point Road because it's less traffic on this road. So you're gonna talk about one, two, three, four, five, five houses. We didn't think this, the reason we have variances is to put something in place that you think's a good idea, and you come and you say, you know what, it doesn't work in this situation. How are we harmed? We at River Island don't think we're harmed. So for that, respectfully, question of approval. And Craig Peels here, who's designed the house, and one thing I forgot to mention, the only complaints I get is that the McKnight house that's there overshadows the pool. And if we make him build a house that sits up on top of the hill, I'm gonna get more complaints about another house overshadowing the pool. The good thing that Craig's done is he's created a house, and when you're coming down the road, you look at the scale of the house here. Charles Dolan's building, the scale of what he's gonna build, it's gonna help tie it all together and look like it works with the land. We weren't allowed to masquerade these lots. That's why we're in this situation. Got a big differentiation in grade. Trying to work with the system here, ask for a variance, that's what these, that's what the variance are here for.
How much of a grade did you have to work with on the other lots on the cul-de-sac?
You know, can you clear it real quick? They're like, there's like a hill that comes through here that's only about five or six feet down, but the problem is it slopes back to, so Charles had a big little mound that comes out there to work with. And I think Will can attest to that. But when it gets to Robert's lot here, it drops off like a cliff. If you remember, you did a retaining wall right. My finger's not working. Did a retaining wall right in here to tie it together. So they've worked it out. We've had, they've had an engineer, may appall them because most residents would try to go the cheaper. They've hired a professional engineer. They've hired one of the best craftsmen in town, Craig. They've all worked together to come up with a plan that I think is the best plan out there. The only concern that River Island has is, we want this to happen. We want it to happen with the conditions. But we would like for the condition to be changed on how we treat the wall on the front so that this is not the only brick wall along the road.
There's another brick wall right down, right across from it, right, right here?
Correct, but if you notice, there's a grade, the grade's coming down, so a good portion of that wall is holding back some dirt. And it matches this wall, which is holding back dirt. So you get it over here. Over here, it's gonna be sitting up by itself and not holding anything back. I'm asking that on behalf of the ARB. I think the ARB can find something everybody's proud of.
All right, thank you, sir. I've got one question to staff here. Let's hypothetically say we approve this. What kind of precedent does that set for us? Because I can't remember us, I can remember one occasion we had somebody wanting to come in on the backside of Jones Creek. We don't see this often, but does this create issues for us going forward?
I'll answer your question in the form of a question. So this one.
Sound like an attorney.
Yep, this one here are built. On this side, this one's under construction, but these here are not yet built, correct? Corner one is. Okay, I was thinking it was after I said it, so that one's built too. The question becomes to Chairman Cox's question is, this is the one we're here for tonight. This guy's coming off of Wimber. Obviously, these guys are as well. To his point, are these guys now going to be coming in off of Marsh Point? And more for the Planning Commission and ultimately Board of Commissioners, do you care? Because, quite frankly, if you do go down the road of approving it off of Marsh Point, and I'm not saying that's the end of the world, there's a good chance you'll see that interest for those, at least those other three lots. Now, on the backside, that's not an option because there is no other access other than Wimber Court.
What's the lot elevations on those lots? I mean, is there a risk of that happening? Are they more level?
They are more level.
More leveled.
Lot more, well, they're also a lot deeper.
Yeah.
You can kill grade with a driveway coming back here and not start your garage till here. I mean, the next-door neighbor on this lot has his garage, I mean, there's twenty feet in the start of his garage.
The one on the other side, too?
I think the depth helps you quite a bit.
Lot size, lot size has a lot to do with the differences. Grade certainly does as well, but there's, there's a potential you could see more requests.
I don't mind.
Not necessarily just here, but also in the few lots on the other side of the street.
I'm just worried about other developments in the future. You know, do you see more of this that, and?
I think, I think in this instance, that argument of a different subdivision, a different part of the county, I don't know that that really holds water. I think you can take those as two separate issues, you know. One side of the, you know, west of Appleton Harlem doesn't mean hella beans over here in River Island.
And the other thing, too, if you say that because of the topography, this is why we're okay with this, that's your whole argument.
Yeah. Then the next request is gonna really have to bring topography and not just, you know, a couple percent grade slope and that's my topography. Well, that's not what you guys were looking at when you looked at this one.
Yeah, but the wife really has this drawing that she just absolutely loves, and it's got that front. It would just fit perfect on this lot and just, they got it on that other lot. If we could just get Matt to go to bat for us one more time.
That's why they got an ARB.
You know, Matt, this reminds me, excuse me, of places wet as an out parcel and you having to make changes to make it work. It's not the first time this has happened.
No, sir. This is a unique situation.
It's like an out parcel you got left, so to speak.
Uh, I wouldn't say, yeah, I mean, you could say that. I mean, we don't, we wouldn't be bothered with driveways here because the uniqueness starts here, by strong opinion. Our development, we created, we're more concerned with aesthetics here than anybody else. Another three or four hundred acres to develop, we're here for another ten years. You're the most affected. Talk about residents, but if things start getting ugly over there, we're in trouble. That's why, and that's why I'm going the extra mile to say, please work with us on letting the ARB control the style of that wall. We're, bushes are one thing, but a brick wall that's out of place, I'm gonna have trouble with my ARB board.
All right, sir. Any other questions?
And we, and we can, ARB can work with staff and show them the stuff. Happy to get staff. I'm not trying to circumnavigate staff. I just think, I think better solution. Follow columns.
All right, thank you, sir.
Excuse me one second. How do you feel about what he's saying with that, with the ARB?
Man, I think we can work with, you know, certainly, we work with Matt on a day-in, day-out basis anyways for multiple projects, so I don't see that as an issue. I think that's probably something we're gonna, in absence of you giving clear direction on what it is you think you want, you know, you're ultimately gonna leave that up to the discretion of staff and then, you know, the developer and ARB. So I'm okay with that myself, but I don't know if you. So I'm okay with that myself, but I don't know if you're going to be okay with that. So just keep that in mind as you render your decision or recommendation that if you have anything particular that you think you want to see, now's the time to speak.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to give, yes, sir, please come forward and give us your name and home address?
Craig Peel, ten thirty-seven Forest Ridge Trail. Uh, I am the designer of all three of the homes, well, Robert's home, the two on the right in that cul-de-sac. I didn't do Charles Dolan's house. Um, but if I did Charles Dolan's house, I would have recommended the same thing that I recommended to Robert. Robert's lot, if we go back to the site plan itself, we have a sixteen-foot difference between the back curbing and the front of that, which means his first option, Charles Dolan on his lot, I don't know how to do this, so let's just touch it. Charles Dolan on his lot came in here and he developed that lot. And if you, if you've been out there and looked at the job site, his garage does sit in the rear. His garage also sits six foot below the curb. For a homeowner to pull in that driveway in the depth he was remained with in order to pull down, he's got to control the water right there at the garage. I drive a, I drive a crew cab duly. It's not going in the cul-de-sac. It's not going in Charles Dolan's driveway and make a turn in that. I know that's at the ordinary, it's the biggest truck you can have. But working with the sixteen-foot topography on there was one consideration that I went to Robert and said, Robert, let's move the garage. Let's bring the garage in on the other side. The other consideration is both homes, this one, this is the McKnight home, this one, this is J.R. Barrett's home, I did. J.R. Barrett home, the garage is pushed way back, it's got a three-car garage on it. The McKnight home, we can only hold a two-car garage based on what he is. The actual drawing is not necessarily right as far as depicted. That garage was actually rotated and turned some on this lot as far as entryway goes. So going to Robert, where we've got forty-four feet on the back of that cul-de-sac in there to do, with building codes now, we've got to have, in order to do a three-car garage on the back of it, you really need a minimum of thirty-eight feet. We have a forty-four-foot cul-de-sac. So anybody building on any of these lots through here too is going to be doing nothing but looking down the cul-de-sac at the three-car garage. No, he doesn't have to have a three-car garage, but the average home now in River Island is building a three-car garage. But going back to Robert, the first step that we took was to say, okay, let's go and present the ARB. Let's design a floor plan and present to the ARB that says, hey, we want to bring the driveway off of Marsh Point, and this is why. One, we could get a side-load garage for two of the cars. Yes, we designed another two-car garage, but that two-car garage sits forty feet back from the front of the house. It's not going to be intrusive to the front of it. It's going to be set back, way back. I like the idea of the landscaping, I like the brick wall, but agree with Matt's opinion coming down to that cul-de-sac, whether or not, you know, I would leave that up to the ARB. So we went to the ARB, got approval for the ARB, developed the plan, got ARB approval. Next thing we know, it comes up here for a building permit and this was thrown in as, hey, the driveway can't come. The first step I made, I called Al and talked to Al and said, Al, could you meet me at that lot? Al got sick, him and I never got together, we never met at the lot. Um, I believe Will did meet with Matt out at the lot and he visually seen in sixteen-foot of fall out there would bring the garage in on the mid-second level. There is a height restriction. I did the McKnight house. We, we barely exceeded on the height restriction there. I didn't want to do it again. So we wanted to start with that, what we had, work with Charles and step the houses coming around. But that's kind of how the development came around and said, hey, this is, this is why we need to do this on this particular lot. The topography on these three lots have less than a twelve-foot fall from one corner to the other corner on there. Which, if you start with a ten-foot basement level, start with a ten-foot poured wall, which is fairly common now, you've got less than a two-foot drop going into your garage where Charles has got the six-foot drop. I don't see this being an issue, but you never know that somebody doesn't come back and say, hey, we want to do that. We're right back in this position. But upon my recommendation, nobody on the other side of the street wants to look at a thirty-eight-foot garage and that's all they're going to see. So that's what developed and started all of it going in that direction. Once you get around the corner and you start back up in here going around, the retaining wall and the stone walls already built. So you're not going to have an issue, anyone on the opposite side of the street saying, hey, I want to bring a garage in. We don't have that problem there. So um, as far as my recommendation was to bring it in off the other side. So that's kind of my thinking.
All right, gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Now we've got one other person left, you got anything you want to add? All right, sir. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and, yes, sir. I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the driveway. With the conditions.
Okay, how would you like to handle the materials of the wall? Would you like to leave that up to the ARB? Or would you like to make, make a recommendation on the material?
I would like to change uh, condition one B on the, the file to allow the, the ARB and staff to agree on, on the, the wall, whether it be brick or stone.
Okay, could you restate it one more time for us?
Make a motion to approve file RZ two zero one two zero four with conditions. Condition one B to be changed to, the brick wall may be altered to a stone or some other form with planning and the ARB agreement.
Motion's been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion is approved five zero. All right, uh, we have two reports here under staff and commissioner comments. We've got a multifamily report and twenty-twenty year-end report. The U-boat commander that's going to handle those.
Well, I don't know if I deserve the title of commander, but I'll run through them. Um, so twenty-twenty was, you know, an unusual year in a lot of ways, but we did actually have a, a fairly normal year from a statistics standpoint. Um, we had sixty-eight rezoning requests, which as you can see is roughly in line with what we've had in previous years. Um, we did have fewer variance requests, we were down to twenty-three. Um, that's a good thing, we like to see fewer variances. As far as rezoning requests by type, um, a lot of them were changes of conditions or revisions. Um, the majority, as we'll see in a moment, was actually revisions to existing zonings. Um, and our largest single category for new zonings was our planned developments, the S1s, the PUDs, those kind of things. Um, so thirty-two revisions to existing zonings, um, seven new S1s, including the church that's pictured there. Um, only one PUD, but it was quite a large one, that was Greenpoint. Um, three new massage locations approved, we do keep track of those. And two new neighborhoods approved this year. And just another graphic depiction of that, um, you can see our major revisions spiking up there. Um, main category of rezoning requests. And just to comparison, year to year, um, we do typically see those planned districts down here at the end um, having our highest number of rezoning requests. So that's um, been fairly steady the last three years that those are our most requested applications. Our residential rezoning request results, um, so this is a comparison of what got, what was applied for and then what percentage was approved versus denied. Um, so we've got twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and then the three-year range from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, kind of how everything's falling out. Um, so in twenty twenty, we did approve most of the single-family rezoning requests. Um, we did approve all of the townhouse rezoning requests and all of the apartment rezoning requests. A little bit different from twenty nineteen when we disapproved most of the townhouses and actually the majority of the single families. So we were a, a little more um, in favor of our rezonings this year. That's not to say, of course, that the numbers were the same. So if we look at um, the number of units or the number of um, homes, which each of those, we obviously approved far more single-family homes by numbers. We've got forty-seven hundred of them over the past four years versus the five hundred and eighty-eight apartments that were approved. As far as variance requests, our most common variance requests remain setbacks and buffers. Um, that's been very consistent, that those are the, the two that we see the most often. Um, and you can see that here. Uh, so these are our residential setbacks and commercial setbacks and then our buffer requirements. Um, the other one that's kind of tying up there is the use provisions. Um, so we can see overall, so we had fewer variance requests in twenty twenty than we've had in other years. Um, you can see the, the sections stay similar, but we see fewer requests in each of them. Um, we did have, as far as residential, we did have two new subdivisions approved. That was Hamilton Road way back in January, um, and Greenpoint, which is, you know, our large mixed-use development, but does certainly include residential subdivisions. Um, we also had Tillery Park approved, um, and that is working its way through plan review. We had eight hundred and eighty new residential lots um, approved through preliminary plots and five hundred and forty-eight final platted ready for sale. And graphically, we can see those preliminary and final plot numbers do tend to alternate. So we'll see higher preliminary plot numbers one year, higher final plot numbers the next. So this year, we were on the higher preliminaries. Um, so we would anticipate next year we'll see more finals come out of that. As far as building permits, we did permit um, eight hundred and fifty-six new single-family homes, um, a handful of new duplexes, our sixteen new apartment buildings, um, those are the ones out at Grand Oaks at River Island, and a hundred and nine new townhomes. So percentage-wise, we're seventy-four percent single-family, about sixteen percent apartments. That's fairly high for the county as far as permitting goes, and just under ten percent townhomes. So comparison by year, um, roughly in line with where we normally are on single-family and townhomes. Looks like a little bit of a spike on the apartments because we do have that major new project underway. As far as the multifamily update, um, we had one apartment project completed in twenty twenty that moved over to that category. That was the quadplexes in Petersburg Square. Um, we have several apartments underway, Grand Oaks, of course, um, Lion Gate sort of um, may eventually get done.
Maybe.
Maybe. Um, Canton Park, um, off of River Watch, um, has site work complete. We've not seen building permits yet for the apartments in that project. Um, and then the mixed-use project in Evans Town Center is working its way through site plan review. Again, we've not seen any actual construction work or building permits for that. Um, combined, these developments could total up to seven hundred and seventy-eight apartments when fully built out. Um, the number of apartments approved but undeveloped is estimated at nineteen hundred and twelve. Um, that does this year include the Greenpoint mixed-use project. And I will admit that it involves some staff estimation on the numbers. Um, their zoning doesn't include a, an actual number of apartments or townhomes to be developed. So there was some interpretation made on likely mix of units in that project to come up with those numbers. Um, outside of that Greenpoint PUD, um, the rest of them are in River Island and Riverwood for the, the majority of those. As far as townhouses, um, the additional townhouse units that were under construction in Lazy Acres were completed in twenty twenty. Um, we had a hundred and nine new townhouse um, building permits issued, which were in existing approved developments, um, Lakeview Commons, Avonel Place, Canton Park, um, and Emerson at Crawford Creek. Um, we also had four new building permits issued in Conner Place, which is off Old Evans Road. Um, this one actually moved out of the completed project file in twenty nineteen. Because they pulled new building permits for these last couple lots, um, they haven't quite finished building those yet, so they're still considered underway. Um, we also had the four building permits issued for the duplexes off Blue Ridge Drive, which is part of the Lakeside Landing PUD. Um, and a preliminary plat for the final section of townhomes in Colari was approved in twenty nineteen. So that is underway, um, as far as development there. As far as undeveloped townhomes, um, we had the Greenpoint PUD and Tillery Park approved in twenty twenty, um, both of which included townhouses. So those were added to the undeveloped count. That brings the number, the potential number of townhomes undeveloped to just over thirteen hundred units. Um, similar to our apartments, most of those are in PUDs, primarily River Island, Riverwood, um, and then now Greenpoint and Tillery. There were two rezoning applications that included multifamily development um, in twenty twenty, Tillery Park and Greenpoint, and both of those were approved. Um, but continue the year-end review, we did do um, two design recognitions in twenty twenty. Um, these are buildings identified by staff for the quality of the design and the construction, um, and kind of their positive contribution to the county's built environment. Uh, so the first one was the Law Offices of David Huganen, this is on Columbia Road. And the second was Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, which is um, at Evans Delox and Blue Ridge Drive.
Ma'am, gentlemen, any questions? The information that uh, Ms. Montgomery presented? All right, thank you. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Have any public comments? Seeing none, we need a motion for adjournment.
Poofed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to adjourn, six forty-four, six forty-five PM.
Thank you, ma'am.